Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you all for being here. We have a couple of items on our agenda tonight. This is our two thousand and twenty-four Colorado legislative update, and I'd like to welcome Majority Leader Monica Duran is with us tonight. Thank you so much, Majority Leader, for being with us. And we have Heather Stauffer with CML to be with us also. Our second item is a discussion on the Lutheran Legacy Campus and the Carr Street Urban Renewal Plans. So we're going to start our meeting, as we generally do, with public comment. If you would please, I have no one signed up in the hall to speak, but I have a couple of online speakers. So if you would, after I call your name, please unmute yourself and please introduce yourself with your first name and your last name and give us a spelling on your last name, if you would, please. And you'll have three minutes to address the council. So our first speaker...
Excuse me. I'm sorry, Mayor, neither one of them have signed up yet.
Oh, they're not signed in?
They aren't registered online yet.
Mr. Figless is in the audience. Okay. Mr. Figless is in the audience. So our first speaker then will be Mr. Ihor Figless. If you would please come to the podium, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Ihor Figless. I live at ninety-seven seventy-five West Thirty-Sixth Avenue in Wheat Ridge. Good evening, everybody. So this is a nice study session meeting. You guys have a lot of good stuff to talk about. There's two things I want to comment on. They're a little bit related. One is on legislation success coming up first. I think that with the City Council, I think the City Council knows that the citizens of Wheat Ridge overwhelmingly would support retaining things like parking requirements for apartment buildings and so forth. So I would encourage City Council to express to our state representatives that Wheat Ridge would not like to have state mandate any zoning requirements which would handcuff our local community. And when speaking about the parking requirements, that transitions over into the legacy, the Lutheran Legacy Campus, because there, when we're talking, we start talking about putting in some higher density housing, obviously parking becomes an issue, especially for, you know, residents around there. And I would also encourage City Council to take into consideration the desires of the neighbors of that particular campus, particularly on the west and south sides of that campus. You know, there's, I understand that there's a desire to make things more modern and so forth, but there's a quality of life in Wheat Ridge which depends on having peaceful and not highly dense residential areas. There's one other thing I wanted to mention about the legislation. I would also ask City Council to encourage their state representatives to not pass, not enact legislation on the climate, which are not supported by, you know, scientific evidence. The, I know that it's very popular to have wind and solar, but as we know from results in California and Texas and Germany, that wind and solar really do not, in the end, provide solutions. Also, the move to electric vehicles does not provide solutions. Actually, I like to call electric vehicles REVs, which stands for Remote Emission Vehicles, because all they do is they transfer that emission from our local, from the tailpipe to the mining operations, to the power generation facilities. But the end result is, because of all the disposal problems of the chemicals involved in manufacturing and so forth, you don't end up with any particular benefit. If you want to have clean energy, I encourage to go nuclear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Figless. I have one speaker also signed up to speak online. Let's see, we have Gretchen Armijo. Is Gretchen Armijo joining us online?
She has not registered yet.
Okay. Okay. That concludes all of our public comment that is registered and participating tonight. With that, we will go to agenda item number one. This is a two thousand and twenty-four Colorado legislative update. I'm really pleased to welcome Heather Stauffer, who is a lobbyist with the Colorado Municipal League and does work on behalf of the CML, and our city is a member of CML, so we participate and work with CML. So Stauffer, please take it away.
Thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. There's a lot going on at the legislature. I don't know if you guys have noticed the amount of bills that have come out so far, but there's a lot going on. So I'm going to touch on a few things, but I by no means am going to hit on all of the bills that we are following or tracking. So far, I think that CML has taken positions on eighty-plus bills. So far this session, I would expect that we'll take positions on many more before we get to May eighth. So first, you know, one of the big issues that we're looking at this session has to do with housing. And this is, you may remember from last year, Senate Bill two thirteen. We've seen a reiteration of kind of the two thirteen debate. This year, there are several bills that have been put forward that kind of break up what two thirteen was into separate different bills. So the first bill that we're looking at has to do with occupancy limits. This is House Bill one oh seven, ten oh seven, excuse me. And it really, it limits local government's ability to implement residential occupancy limits. It takes away our ability to do that based on familial standards and really puts that into, based only on demonstrated health and safety standards. And it references international building code standards, fire code regulations, CD-PHE, and wastewater and water quality standards. That bill did pass second reading in the Senate, so it will go through third reading, and I believe that that will pass. We did ask, work with the sponsors to get some clarity around whether that means that we're able to regulate short-term rentals, because that became something that was unclear in the bill, whether this would apply to short-term rentals or not, and similarly group homes. The sponsors did say on the record that this did not impact short-term rentals. So we should be able to put some parameters around the amount of occupancy within short-term rentals and hopefully group homes as well within the context of the bill. We were really hoping for some amendments that would clarify that we don't have to wait for a problem to happen before we can regulate the amount of people in a home and really look after some of those predatory landlord landlords who will try to put as many people in a house as possible. But what the bill has become, I think, has a lot of leeway for local governments, and it does take care of those kind of outdated familial standards that many local governments had in their ordinances previously. So that one is going to pass out of third reading in the Senate this week likely. The big two that we're really working on is House Bill eleven fifty-two. This is accessory dwelling units. And this makes accessory dwelling units a use by right in Colorado. Lauren gave a really great talk at our legislative workshop about Wheat Ridge's ADU policy. Thank you so much. That was really awesome. So we know that lots of local governments have ADU policies in place. What this would do was say that the ADUs is a use by right, and it would take away a local government's ability to require things like parking requirements, owner occupancy rules, and what they're calling restrictive design or dimension standards. So we would really like to see some amendments to the bill that, A, take away that use by right language and really allow local governments to continue to put parameters around what ADUs look like in their communities. There's also some incentive funding in this bill, so we feel like if we were able to take, put some parameters around what municipalities can do with ADUs, take away the use by right language, and make this an incentive-based bill, it would actually help a lot of communities who are looking to incentivize ADUs in their community. So that is one that we're working on, and we've had a lot of really great talks with the sponsors on that, so we will be seeking amendments on that to make that incentive-based. Very similarly, House Bill thirteen thirteen. This is a transit-oriented communities bill. It mandates rezoning in certain areas around rail and bus and transit corridors with, by local governments in MPOs and metro planning organizations. So I believe Wheat Ridge would be included in that requirement. And then it requires that these municipalities establish a housing opportunity goal. If you don't meet your housing opportunity goal currently in the bill, you would lose access to your Highway Users Trust Fund, those tax dollars, and DOLA could actually put an injunction in until you meet those housing opportunity goals. So there's a lot of focus on the punitive measures in this bill, and I think that it really takes away from what this bill could be. There's also some preemption in this bill. So we're working and have expressed to the sponsors and the governor's office that we would like to see this become an incentive-based bill, and we would like to see something that we could support. So what that means is that we would seek amendments that would take out their ability to take away HUTF. We think that HUTF is not the correct funding source to go along with TOCs. There's certainly transportation and housing nexus for all of these bills, but Highway Users Trust Fund is really used for safety and for road maintenance. And so taking away our access to those funds is really punitive and won't lead to more housing. So we're asking that that provision be taken out of the bill. We're also asking that the preemption is taken out of the bill to allow locals to determine what's proper for their communities and what the right density is for their communities. And if we get those amendments, I think this could be a bill that we could support. So we're really, with all of these bills, it's really different from two thirteen because we're really looking for something that we can ultimately support. We're hoping to get there this year. I will mention, CML, since the beginning of the interim last session, so with the death of two thirteen, let me back all the way up, we weren't happy that nothing passed. We were happy that that didn't pass in its current form, but we wanted to see something around affordable housing pass. We had amended two thirteen in the Senate to some standards that we thought we could support. When that got changed in the House, unfortunately, it became something that we could no longer support again, and then, of course, it didn't get heard and died on the calendar. Shortly after that, we started convening some stakeholder groups with members of the business community, members of local government, members of the environmental community, a whole eighty-plus stakeholders, to talk about what we would want to see in housing bills moving forward. And the results of that, we heard a lot about planning and how planning for housing is the basis and foundation of how you provide affordable housing in your communities. Most local governments already know this and are already looking at this. But we put together those ideas that focused on local and regional planning, and we came up with Senate Bill one seventy-four. So this is state support for sustainable, affordable housing, and it really focuses on what we think are the foundations for addressing these housing needs in our communities. So let me just grab my handy-dandy cheat sheet here. It's about a forty-page bill, so it's not a short bill, but it combines state support and local government requirements to create something that I think is supported, but also leaves decisions about affordable housing in the hands of locals. So in this bill for state support, the Colorado Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, will create methodologies for statewide assessments and housing needs assessments so that we're all working kind of on the same data, and we can all look at it together and say, oh, look, you know, these people are doing this, and this person's doing this, and look at it from a statewide perspective as well as a regional and a local perspective. So that was one of the pieces that we got from folks, was we're not all working on the same issues and we're not looking at the same data. So standardizing that data was important. DOLA will also provide technical assistance, planning grants, and will maintain resources on housing practices for local governments. And then DOLA will assist with regional cooperation and will create reports to inform master plans. So we've heard that sometimes cities and counties don't get along, and so that's an issue. So we're really hoping that DOLA can assist with some of the regional cooperation to smooth some of those things out. For local governments, local governments who are a thousand plus in population will be required to conduct a housing needs assessment and update them every six years. Regions can also choose to conduct a regional housing assessment as well, because we heard that that was very important. And then from those housing needs assessments, local governments will create housing action plans that will outline our strategies, and those strategies are listed in the bill. It has many different avenues that you can take for that. And then counties and municipalities who have master plans will update them to include the housing action plan and a new water and strategic growth elements within your master plans. We felt like water elements in our master plans were something that was, most people are doing, but if you're not doing it, you really need to look at your water resources to plan for more housing, and then a strategic growth element within those housing action plans and in those, excuse me, in the comp plans and master plans. So all of this has an overlay with state grant prioritization. We heard from some communities that they wanted accountability from local governments, and we felt like those communities who meet the standards, set out, the methodology set out by DOLA, could get prioritized for grant funding for affordable housing. So we felt like that was a great way to incentivize. We know that through Prop one twenty-three, over two hundred local governments have signed up to voluntarily meet those requirements, so we know that that model works. So that is a part of our bill. So I'll stop talking about that, but if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to go more in depth in that bill. But we would encourage every local government to take a support position on that bill. That's going to be heard in the Senate Local Government Committee next week on Tuesday, so we'd love to have some support from our locals on that bill. We heard a little bit about it, but parking requirements is another element of two thirteen that has made its way into another bill. That's House Bill thirteen oh four, and it eliminates parking minimums within a local government's ability to set parking minimums. So we're concerned about that. What that does effectively is allow developers to decide how much parking is necessary for their developments. And unfortunately, you know, from our perspective, developers have the bottom line in mind when they're creating housing developments, and so we don't feel like they're going to provide the adequate amount of parking that's necessary if left completely on their own. And what's going to happen is that those parking, those cars are going to get pushed to the public streets, and then that's going to impact law enforcement, it's going to impact fire, it's going to impact EMS, it's going to also impact, it's going to leave local governments having to deal with more crowded public streets. So we feel like that bill, we're opposed to that bill. I don't know if there's amendments that could help us get to a support position on that bill, unfortunately, but we really feel like parking minimums is something that should be left in the hands of local governments in lieu of an adequate and reliable public transportation system. If you want to get rid of cars, fund public transportation. That's kind of where we're at with that. I'll just mention a couple others. Senate Bill one oh six, this is the construction defects bill. It creates a right to remedy for construction professionals and adds some other forms of alternative dispute resolutions to hopefully cut down on the amount of litigation that we see from construction defects, and that will hopefully allow builders to create more condos specifically. So we are in support of Senate Bill one oh six. That was heard in the Senate Local Government Committee. It was laid over for action. They're working on some amendments with some of the opponents on that bill, and so I expect that to be heard somewhat soon. It's scheduled for this week, not sure if it'll be heard this week. I think they're still working on some amendments there. House Bill eleven oh seven, this is the judicial review of local land use decisions. It awards attorney's fees to the prevailing defendant in a claim against local land use decisions. So this is Rule one oh six, for those of you who are familiar. And what they found is really that sometimes folks will use legal system to try to overrule what a local government has decided in terms of land use. And so this is meant to kind of discourage those frivolous lawsuits around Rule one oh six by awarding attorney's fees to the prevailing defendant, but not, the prevailing defendant in this context would usually be the local government and not the person bringing the suit. So it's meant to discourage that practice for local governments who have done their due diligence around local land use decision and given people the opportunity to speak, and if people are still opposed, you can't really, you shouldn't use the legal system to stop those decisions. So we're in support of that bill. We're happy to see that it passed the House and is making its way over to the Senate. Moving off of housing, there's other things happening at the legislature, surprisingly, and I'll just mention a couple. And tell me when I am out of time, please. Okay, great. So open meetings, open records. House Bill twelve ninety-six, this is modifications to the Colorado Open Records Act. This is being brought by Representative Kip. It adds some extenuating circumstances to the Open Records Act that would allow for the extension of response periods that a custodian is allowed to use when responding to CORR request. So specifically, the bill allows a clerk or a custodian to determine if somebody is a vexatious requester. I think we all know who vexatious requesters are. They are folks who use CORR and really weaponize CORR to stop government business or to harass government folks. So this bill would allow somebody to determine that they, that that person is a vexatious requester, and if you are determined to be a vexatious请求er, then you would have thirty days to respond to that person's CORR requests. It also allows you to lump multiple CORR requests received within fourteen days. So the person that CORRs every single day, asking for more and more information, you could lump that together as one request in terms of response time and in terms of calculating fees for CORR requests. So make some good changes. It does specify that a member of the mass media or a news person cannot be found to be a vexatious请求er, so that was a carve-out that they created within that. It also allows a custodian to determine that a request is made in the solicitation of business. So sometimes we get records requests that ask for specific information so that people can go and spam folks for their business and to create, for, excuse me, to create a base for their business. And so this would also similarly allow a custodian to deny a request for, rather extended request, to thirty days if it's made on a solicitation of business. So we think that there's some good changes in this bill that would give local governments a little bit more leeway when responding to CORR and determining these vexatious requesters. And so that has passed the House committees, and I believe will be heard on second reading. I don't think it's going to appropriations. The other open meetings, open records bill that I wanted to mention was House Bill eleven sixty-eight. This is accessibility for public meetings. So this would mandate live streaming and virtual participation in meetings, except for in geographic locations that are considered unserved or underserved in terms of broadband. It would require that you upload documents that you have in your possession and distribute that to the public body, to the body, excuse me, distributed to the public body twenty-four hours in advance. This bill has looked very, very different from what has been introduced. So what has been introduced requires a lot. It requires that you update documents during the meeting as you receive them, which is pretty onerous and hard to do, especially for small communities, in addition to mandating the live streaming and virtual participation, which would be hard for smaller communities as well. And then it would, in the current draft, it allows a person to make auxiliary requests twenty-four hours in advance, which would be hard to meet. And then if you couldn't meet those standards, you would have to postpone your meeting. So what's happened with this bill is that they've run into a fiscal note problem. So sometimes what happens is if a bill impacts the state, state departments will say how much it costs, and in order to pass that through appropriations, you have to be able to fund that. This bill has a million-dollar fiscal note on it because it would be onerous to the state. So what the proponents are doing are, they're striking, they're doing a strike below amendment. So they're cutting everything in this amendment, and they're starting from scratch, essentially. So we're working with the proponents on what that strike below amendment looks like. Currently, what the language we've seen still mandates live streaming and virtual participation. It does take away the provisions that would make you, excuse me, take away the provisions that would delay your public meetings. So it takes that language out, which is a good thing. It does say that you have to upload documents that you have in your possession twenty-four hours in advance of a meeting, which I think is standard practice. And you do have to provide auxiliary services with timely request, and they are defining timely request as seven days in advance. It does put into a statute that a violation is three thousand dollar fines. We've proposed to the sponsors and the proponents is that they make the streaming and the virtual participation upon request, so that way you're not in a situation where you're live streaming or spending a lot of time and staff time with nobody who's signed up. And that's especially onerous for smaller communities, as I said. So we had a great meeting with them today. I'm hoping that we can find a path forward on this that really balances the need for participation for folks who have a disability and allows them to have really good participation and meaningful access, but also recognizes that municipalities have limited resources and staff to be able to do the things that they want, and we shouldn't be opening up liability unnecessarily. So I think that there's a path forward there. We're still working with the proponents and the sponsors on that. That's going to be heard in committee, I believe, on Wednesday, so we're hoping that we'll see some amendment language on that before Wednesday. So we're hoping that we'll see some amendment language on that before Wednesday. I may just end it there. And then folks who have questions can let me know.
That's great timing. Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation. We're going to pause for questions and hear from our two representatives. And so I'm really pleased to acknowledge that Senator Jesse Danielson is here. Glad to have you with us tonight. And I would like to open the floor. If you have anything that you'd like to present to the council at this time.
Thanks so much for inviting us to be here today.
Oh, thank you, sir. And great information. It was really great. I would just say last year, you know, when 213 kind of descended upon us, it was, just so the council knows, we just had a really quick and open line of communication between the mayor and myself, and were able to just exchange those ideas in a rapid fashion. The bill came late, really respectful tone, but then I could see immediately what your concerns were. And for that, I'm grateful because maybe that doesn't exist with every municipality, you know, to their state senators or senator. And I really appreciated it. And it gave me a lot of information that I just, I kind of needed at the ready. And so thanks. And I see some of these measures coming forward piecemeal. Not necessarily a big fan of some of them, but you know, I think you get the sense they're sorting through it, right? A bill gets introduced and then we work on it. So as these things move through, we'll look to you and to you for, you know, your position, what you want me to do. I guess my main thing, I'm here with my representative, Monica Duran, Majority Leader in the House, and we do see eye to eye on policy. And so I'm working, I'm quite grateful for her leadership on a number of issues that are very close to my heart. So we're partnering on a number of workers' rights issues, wage theft, and the captive audience bill to try and protect the workers that run this state. And I'll probably let Majority Leader Duran speak to them because they are House bills. And so they're working on, she knows what's happening right now, but very, very, very passionate about these issues. Like I said, we do a good job of supporting the workers that run this place, and they need our protection. So we're looking at that. And then she's also the prime sponsor in the House, along with Representative Weissman, on another issue that is kind of my main effort this session, switching gears a little bit. I know this is not top of mind for the municipal league or maybe the city of Weiridge, but it is for your constituents. This has to do with survivors of childhood sexual abuse. And so again, I know it's nothing that we really wish we needed to talk about, but a few years ago, I passed two bills that served that community of survivors. One doing away with civil statute of limitations forever going forward, and one giving survivors what they call a look back window to pursue claims against their abusers or institutions that knowingly shielded that abuse for a certain amount of time. And the bill went into law, was signed by the governor, and went into effect for a little over a year, and then the Supreme Court said not so. And basically directing us that if you wish to legislate in this way, you need to change the Constitution because it doesn't provide for this retrospective kind of legislation. So the survivors said, okay, we'll do it. We'll get the signatures, we'll change the Constitution. And Majority Leader Duran and I said, no, you don't have to do that because we can do that for you. And so the Constitution can be altered with a two-thirds vote majority in both chambers if you want to refer something to the ballot, which we wish to do. And the reason that I mention it, A, obviously it's of really high importance for this community. We cannot protect these kids from the abusers that are still in the system because if you can't hold the abuser accountable, they're still teaching or coaching or preaching or doing whatever they do and they still have access to kids. And that's just a fact. Most people don't come forward with their abuse until they're in their 50s. And so anyone who's 28 years or older in the state of Colorado has no recourse at all. We need to change that. So we have to change the Constitution. And I wanted to thank, the Chiefs of Police took a support position. Several district attorneys have taken a support position. A large number of community organizations have taken a support position. Because right now, we have the 23 Democrats in my caucus in the Senate are all in favor of the measure, I need 24 votes. And until there is a firm commitment from my good friends across the aisle, we need to remind them that this is a community bill. This has never been a partisan issue before. I hope that it doesn't really end up that way on this one. So thank you to your team. The Human Trafficking Council is on board, the Laboratory to Combat Human Trafficking, I mean, I could go on and on and on. Religious organizations, community support networks, obviously survivor support networks and organizations of the like. So I didn't think it would be a tough fight because in the past, we've done these things with broad bipartisan support. The original bill came out of the Senate 31 to 3. So I'm hoping that with this really broad, deep support from within the communities all across the state, we'll be able to remind my good colleagues from across the aisle that it'd be an easy vote to do right by their constituents. Also, in case it matters to anyone, we did some research to see if my gut feeling on the matter was accurate, and it polled at 84% statewide. And in some of these more rural areas, 86%. You're all in politics, nothing polls at 86%. The public wants to vote. They want to vote. And so, you know, if you have friends and family across the state, obviously your representatives in the legislature have declared their position, but reach out. And if it's something that matters to you personally, you could make a difference. And like I said, when law enforcement gets involved, and you know, just to remind folks, like, this is about keeping people safe. So that's kind of my main focus this year. And I'm happy to take any questions I can try and answer, if you have them.
Okay, once again, I think we'll take a pause on questions. Let the representative.
Great, thank you so much, and thanks for having me here. And as Senator Danielson mentioned, I love hearing from each and every one of you. I know I often reach out to our good mayor here when I have questions regarding policies that are coming, but I really do value your feedback. That really kind of weighs into decisions that we make. I want to know how it's going to impact my community. And lots of times, I don't have the opportunity to just pick up the phone. I will text you quite a bit and ask, which is really important, right? Because decisions we make at the Capitol oftentimes, as we know, impact our communities here. So appreciate that and encourage each and every one of you to please reach out to me. Senator Danielson mentioned wage theft and captive audience, and I'm just going to touch on it really lightly because there's a few other things I want to talk about. Wage theft right now is sitting in appropriations. We've kind of reduced the fiscal, but are continuing to try and see if we can find a path forward with our construction community. And I don't know if we'll be able to thread that needle, but we are trying really hard. Same with captive audience, we're still in the midst of working on that. We'll be in committee on Wednesday. Once again, trying to bring in our chambers to see how we can thread that needle and find a place that we're not all completely happy. But the essence of the bill is really trying to give employees the opportunity, if they don't want to sit in on a political or religious conversation, speech meeting, they don't have to, right? They can say, I don't want to sit in on this meeting without any repercussions of losing their job or losing pay. So it's really trying to find that balance, listening to everyone's thoughts and concerns on that. So continue to work on that and happy to update you through that process. I think a few of the other things, and I'll just kind of highlight, we have, it's a busy time. We have a long bill coming up next week. We'll have it first in the House and then it'll move to the Senate. So we're focused on the budget. The forecast, as many of you probably know, isn't looking that great. So we'll be really fortunate if we have $20 million to go toward our bills. So we really have to look at those fiscals, really have to prioritize not only the fiscal, but also prioritize the necessity for some of the bills that are coming. So they're tough decisions, but we all have to do that within our budgets at home, so we have to do that at the state Capitol also. So looking forward to that conversation next week. A few things that I'm working on and that have gotten out of committee actually and are up to the Senate. One is House Bill 1225, which is first-degree murder, bail, and jury selection. When we removed the death penalty, we created a loophole, which we did not discover till last year, or a judge actually discovered that anyone who is either convicted or charged with a felony or heinous crime could get out on bail, which was not the intent of removing the death penalty. So what this will do is create a ballot, has to go to the ballot, has to be voted on by everyone. So it would actually just kind of bring back in what we have always had in Colorado, right? That if you were charged with a heinous crime, you weren't eligible for bail. So it's just bringing that back into play. So we've got that ballot question coming, and then also the language together so that it would reinstate it. So hopefully we'll get that. They got out of the House really well, and it's up in the Senate. Don't know if you guys have heard that yet or not, up there, but I'm hoping, I think it'll get out of the Senate and then it'll go to the governor's desk. And then that'll be on the ballot in November, is my hope there. Another bill, let's see, there's several, and I just kind of want to highlight a few. Another one that just got out of committee, bipartisan support with Senate Bill 35. And what this has to do with, this increases the statute of limitation for labor and sex trafficking for adults and for minors. It came out of the Senate 33 to 1. I knew that there would be some challenges in the House. The makeup of the House with 65 of us is a little different. So that did come out of judiciary, and it will be, hopefully get out of the Senate. So what this does is it kind of defines the crime of violence when it comes to human trafficking, when it comes to adults and children. So the use or possession and threatened to use of a deadly weapon plays into that and the death or serious injury of an individual other than the defendant. So under this bill, if there is a crime of human trafficking where there is a serious bodily injury or death or use, possession, or threat of a weapon, the statute of limitations would be increased to 20 years. And I worked really closely with DA Beth McCann and law enforcement, so it had tremendous support, and we were able to get it out. And this is something that would be a huge step for us to take in changing our current human trafficking laws. Let's see here. Also, just passed, and it's on the way to the Senate, is concealed carry permits and training. So I have a concealed carry permit, and the first time I got mine, it was a two-hour training and I didn't have to live fire. So I've actually been working on this bill since I was elected in 2019. At that time, I couldn't run it for many different reasons, but this year, we ran the bill and we got the support of our sheriffs, we got them to a neutral position. I made quite a few amendments to actually just kind of simplify it. And the sheriffs wanted to actually be in charge of the instructors, verifying that the instructors were trained properly. We did that, that wasn't a problem. The standardized testing, which we don't have in the state of Colorado right now for concealed carries, so you can go take a class for two hours or you can take a class for, you know, three days. This just creates the minimum, eight-hour training. We broke up the eight hours, especially for folks in rural areas, can split it up, two hours here, two hours there, whatever works best. Also requires live fire, because I think it's really important if you're going to have a concealed carry permit, you need to know how to load, unload, and you need to know the recoil on one. And just common sense, right? Safety. So it is really about safety. So we did get everyone to neutral and made a lot of amendments for my colleagues across the aisle, which made sense to me. So that is on the way up to the Senate to you all. So that should hopefully go really well. And it was just really about common sense, right? And making sure that we were updating in that course all the new federal laws, state laws, how to, if you have to use it, your firearm, the mental and emotional impact that can have. So it just created the minimum standard, and then it's up to the instructor if they want to add more into that. So they're able to do that. And it is an open book test because I thought, open book, people learn differently, and I thought with an open book, you can certainly look back, you can ask questions, you create dialogue. So it is in person, there is no online course that you can take, it has to be in person. So really proud of the work on that one, actually. The next bill that I have coming up, and then we can go on, which will be up in committee on Monday, the 25th, and that is firearms and ammunition excise tax. And the time I've been at the legislature, most of you probably know I'm a domestic violence survivor and sexual assault survivor, so I'm always advocating and fighting for funding. And it's always been really tough. We have lean years, right? We have years where we have a little bit more funding. So I was trying to think outside the box for the last six years, and this year I started during the summer trying to figure out what can we do to create a permanent funding stream where we're not reliant on the state. So what I came up with after many conversations and many different options was an excise tax on guns and ammunition. So it would be 11% excise tax. That once again, has to go to the vote of the people, which I think it should. So the funding, say, we make an estimate of, I don't know, $60 million. $45 million of that goes to crime victims. We know some of the unintended consequences of criminal justice reform, and some of the fees that we would collect would go to crime victim funding. Well, we've kind of cut back on that. So the priority is crime victim services, whether that be therapy, counseling, housing, food. We have the system already in place with different advocates and programs to be able to allocate those dollars. Also broke up some of that into grants for school safety. So it really kind of looks at overall the need of what we have in the state. Unfortunately, crime is not going down. Domestic violence is not going down. Sexual assault isn't going down. So if we're trying to really create a path of healing and a path of success and a path of people like me who dug themselves out of that and got to where I'm at today, then they need to know that we are there for them, and whatever level that is and however we can do it. So it's going to be tough. Obviously, it's looked upon as a gun bill, even though the message and the narrative is about crime victims and supporting the needs of our community out there, so we're not relying so much on, you know, the state to do it. But I'm hopeful and really excited about it. And once again, that'll go to the vote of the people, so we will find out in November. We have a poll that will have the data back Wednesday of this week. Happy to share that information with you because obviously if it doesn't poll well, then why do we want to do it? We might have to look at a different option. My hope is that it's going to poll really great, and the community and the state wants to support crime victims out there and safety. So that's just a few of the things. There's much, a lot of other things that are going on right now. It's a busy time, but I look forward to it. And like Senator Danielson mentioned, we're working on a lot of things together. You know, she's a strong advocate up in the Senate for me and really does respectful work, and that really makes a difference. So happy to answer any questions, and I'll leave it at that so we can move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Majority Leader and Senator Danielson. Appreciate that. We're going to throw it open to questions, so if you have questions, we'll start with Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have two quick questions. One of them, for Heather, on the open meetings, the amendments that are going through the open meetings one, when I had read it, it had that all of your commissioners, all of your boards, all of your, like, you know, parks and rec, like, all of those would have to be livestreamed, which wouldn't necessarily be feasible unless all of those were done in this room, and they're not always. And so do you think that that'll be a part of the amendments that come through there?
Thank you, yes. So in the first draft of the bill as introduced, you're completely correct, it was way too broad. It captured meetings that I don't think they meant to capture. So one thing that we suggested to the proponents is that they tie it to the open meetings law to actually capture only those entities that are subject to open meetings law requirements. And we're still going back and forth on the definition of what would constitute a meeting that would have to be livestreamed. Special Districts Association is concerned because some of their folks are not necessarily subject to open meetings law, but might be under this, and so we're kind of still going back and forth. But we are trying to get at what the proponents actually want because they want city council meetings, they want meetings where formal action is being taken. They don't necessarily think that it's appropriate for every single meeting, so I think that they're open to working with us. But yes. But yes, great, great point. It was very, very broad, the way that it was written.
Great, thank you. And then my next question for Leader Duran. On your excise tax that you're looking at, so as you know, because you served with me and thank you on the board for Porchlight Family Justice Center, do you feel like some of that funding then would go to support our justice centers? We only have two currently in the state, but there are other counties that are currently working on opening them and with Porchlight, we've been working with them to help them get that together. So I was just wondering about.
Yeah, thank you for that question. It should because there are different programs, and I've talked with Porchlight about this, are different programs that they can apply for, different grants and different things. So yes, it would, it would. So I'm happy to kind of, as we're working out the details, I know we're in committee on Monday, but happy to circle back around with them. But yes, they can access a lot of these funds, they just have to apply for them.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Holtein.
First of all, just want to thank our representatives for being here tonight and for all your work on behalf of the state and certainly on behalf of the great city of Wheat Ridge. It was really good, I get to follow a lot of the legislative stuff, but I don't get to follow all of it. So I just was really grateful to hear the bills that you guys are bringing forward. I think they're good for our community. Excuse me, there's a couple of bills that I want to just check in on. Early in the session, there was a short-term rental property tax reclassification bill. I think it's stalled out and I just want to verify that that stalled because that would have pretty big impacts on our community. It is HB 241299, I believe.
So that bill did have significant opposition. I think that's the one being run by Senator Hanson, is that if I'm remembering correctly?
Mulica and Byrd.
Mulica and Byrd, okay. So this is, that there's two.
Okay.
So the first one was being run by Senator Hanson.
Okay.
And that one was facing significant opposition. The one being run by Representative Byrd and Senator Mulica is kind of the real estate community's response to that. We have not taken a position on either of those bills. We decided to be neutral because different municipalities regulate STRs in different ways. And so some municipalities thought that was a really good idea and some didn't. So we're actually neutral. So I haven't been following that as closely as I would have liked to. I don't believe that either of them have gone through committee and either of the representatives can correct me if I'm wrong. But I don't think either of them have gone through committee. I think they are both kind of in this holding pattern, so.
Okay, I just would want to register that we have significant concerns about reclassifying short-term rentals as commercial properties. We have really put our lodgers' tax to good use here in Wheat Ridge and we sequester a huge portion of that and we're putting it towards affordable housing. So for us, it would actually negatively impact our ability to locally fund affordable housing, which is a priority in our community. So I just want to register, should those bills move forward, they would really put us in conflict on good policy development that the seated council has done good work on. So just want to make note of that.
Can I interrupt you just a second? What were those two House Bill numbers?
One was 1299.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I do not know the other one off the top of my head.
Okay, we'll find it.
Yeah, I can find it. But yeah, those are ones that both my co-counselor Scott Omen and I, early in the session, flagged as problematic.
And the Senate bill is 033.
Thank you. That's teamwork, teamwork makes the dream work.
Thank you.
And then we had a discussion two weeks ago in which the mayor brought forward the proposal for us to oppose the ADU bill, really based on the preemption. And so as a council, we came to a consensus that we would oppose bills that had preemption, that touched the preemption third rail. I think, you know, I'm really proud. Wheat Ridge has actually done a lot of the things that the scattered 213 bills are trying to address through transit-oriented investments, through ADUs. We've even done parking reductions, which has translated to increased ability to build affordable housing and reducing some of the barriers for affordable housing developers to move forward in our community. So I think we're leaders in this space. And so should these bills get amended and the preemption piece comes off again, I think it would be good for us to maybe, you know, touch and make sure we're not opposing bills that we think are actually going to benefit us. Because I know the ADU bill proposes some support and assistance that actually are significant barriers for people in our community who would like to build ADUs. They are not an affordable housing option necessarily when you've got the barriers of, you know, connecting with utilities and things like that. So I think there's some good ideas coming through and there are ideas that if done right, that we could really benefit from. And then lastly, I just want to, it looks like everyone's in support from CML to others, but there's some good transportation bills coming through around supporting the transit. Like you mentioned, that the best way to, you know, get cars off the road is to build transit. So there's a couple of good bills coming through the session. I'm sad that the vulnerable road user bill is probably on its death meal, but the other ones around funding transit, especially funding transit to address ozone, I think are really important. And again, we would be benefiting directly and indirectly from those. And so just excited to see that there's support positions from CML on those and would love to see those get across the finish line. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, Senator, please.
I'm sorry to interrupt the questions, but I did have one more thing that I think you all will, should hear about. My other major push, and ever since I got elected, you know, has been to work for the well-being of older Coloradans. And this year, the budget for funding the AAAs, the area agencies on aging is just, it didn't exist really. So it just flatlined. There's a need of about $20 million plus. There's a waitlist need that was assessed by themselves at the request of the administration, of the Polis administration, to sort of summarize what we would need to meet the current needs on the waitlist for services like Meals on Wheels and other really basic amenities to allow for older people to stay in their homes and be independent and live with dignity. At 8.1 million, the bill I introduced is, direct is very simple. Give the AAAs $5 million. And then do an increase for inflation because it just, it needs to. Because as inflation grows, obviously the small amount that we've allocated to them just shrinks. And a reason that I didn't want to overlook it tonight is just because Jeffco is aging more rapidly than the rest of the state. Wheat Ridge is home to a lot of older Coloradans. And of course, Colorado is aging more rapidly than most of the rest of the country. We're really ill-prepared. So not only are we meeting the needs down the line, now we're taking funding out from these AAAs. And if the bill should fail, or, you know, I don't care how the money gets in the system, if they stick it in the long bill or whatever they do, which I know is unlikely. However, when speaking with the Dr. Cog representatives and some of the other advocates who are proponents of my bill, it's the first time in 25 years that they haven't been assured of the funding, either directly from the governor or from the JBC themselves, because it's just such a basic need, which here in Wheat Ridge is much higher than elsewhere. So all the AAAs across the state are firmly in favor of it. They've come to Denver just to meet up and discuss it. And just in terms of what that means for the city to pick up whatever services they can provide or these people will be in need really immediately. If we don't pass that bill, they start cutting services this summer. And I'm sorry I didn't mention it on the front end, but again, I don't know if that's into the world of CML, but for you and your constituents, it's probably going to touch people in their own homes. So, or their loved ones. And so that's Senate Bill 40. And dearly hoping that it passes, but right now we have no assurances.
Well, thank you very much. I wake up every morning as a much older adult. I'll tell you. So Patrick and Mr. Goff wanted to.
Yeah, Senator, I'm glad you brought that up. We met with Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director, and Alice Scheck, who's not here this evening. We met with Seniors Resource Center months ago now. And they're very, very concerned about this, about transportation issues, food scarcity, isolation issues with our seniors. And I mean, to a point of, there was a lot of money through COVID, right? And it's just gone, there's no money left. And actually, I don't know if Karen is prepared to speak to this or not, but all our Parks and Rec departments across, in Jefferson County have been meeting and trying to figure out what we can do as municipalities to fill some of those gaps. But Karen, you want to add to anything to that?
Yes, that's correct. We have just created a Jeffco Senior Collaborative Group and we meet at the Seniors Resource Center monthly to try and tackle some of these projects locally on a grassroots level. Right now, we're really focused on the food insecurity piece because it's the component that we feel like we can make the biggest impact as a group on. But definitely recognizing that this is a huge issue and appreciate that work that you're doing. Senator.
Yes, please.
Thank you again, great work. I feel though that this state has an obligation and a duty out of nothing more than the respect to the people who built these communities. And if it does make a difference, I see when the state doesn't hold up our end of the bargain, what it means for the municipalities that'll have to pick up the pieces or try and work together to fill in the gaps. It's really admirable, don't get me wrong, and I'm grateful. And Seniors Resource Center should be held up as a great example in terms of the services they provide for this area and beyond. However, if we can't even, if we can't even find the $5 million that doesn't even begin to address the kind of urgent need, I feel that we are failing the people that we owe the most to. So if there is something on this particular policy that either, again, I know your representatives are firmly in favor, it's trapped in a prope and I don't see it going anywhere. You know, I just, if, there's a basic need that the state needs to meet. And so if there is something to be done around specifically Senate Bill 40, and again, whether it's finding the funding somewhere, but see how, that's what I meant. Inevitably, if we can't do it right, then the demand falls on you. So I would assume that that's going to be the same domino effect in every municipality across the state. So thanks if there is something to be done around supporting that particular bill.
I hope you'll, I sit on the Dr. Cog board and we're very, very concerned about the area, you know, agency on aging. And so I don't know where it is in the process, but I'm sure if you have, if you need people to come down and testify about its need, that we would certainly, hopefully be able to find some individuals that would be willing to testify.
I'm sorry, I'm off the mic. It's been stuck in the Appropriations Committee for weeks. We had a great hearing. The AAAs came alongside Dr. Cog, but I mean, from all over, from the valley, you know, down in Archuleta County. And I mean, they came from everywhere to say, we demand this of you, state. Please, please act on our behalf. So it wasn't even just the Denver area team. And then of course, you know, like I grew up in Northern Weld County, okay. The needs of older people in the rural parts of the state are just different. And only the AAAs know how to address that. And then working alongside with, you know, other service providers, other local governments. But this is a pretty basic need that has never gone unmet until now. So yes, it's sitting in the Senate Appropriations.
Thank you. Additional questions from council or staff? Counselor Dozeman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Senator Danielson and Representative Duran for being here this evening. We really appreciate you just taking the time out of your evening to be here. So as Councilmember Holtein alluded to, you know, we've, over the last two legislative sessions, we've seen a lot of preemptive policies, particularly directed at land development, rezoning. And it's kind of under the guise of affordable housing. Whereas I think communities are really trying to work together at a regional level to address these issues. And I feel like it's created a divisive kind of pitting us against each other as opposed to working towards resolution. And I just wanted to hear from the two of you as a whole, like how do you see, how do you personally feel or what's your opinion on some of these measures? And will it be effective in establishing affordable housing as the intent? And just kind of where you see that moving forward? We've all taken a stance on not supporting any legislation that would take away our power as local representatives because I feel like we have a good pulse on what our community needs and we take a significant amount of time and effort to poll and to access our constituents. And, you know, we've had a lot of robust conversation and public input processes to address some of these issues. And not to say that we get it right all of the time, but I do think that that is a power that exists within a local government because we can do it better. And so just moving forward, like what's your stance on that? And how do you see some of these bills moving forward?
Great questions. For me, it's always about local control. I voted no for 213 and I voted no on the, there was a growth bill last year, I can remember the bill number. But anyway, I voted no. I am always reaching out to our mayor and like I can't say it enough times, please reach out to me, even if it's a text message, to say, hey, you know, on city council, we had this discussion on this particular bill that's impacting local control. I need to know that. I work closely also with Lakewood because they're part of my district now. They have a legislative committee that they put together with some of their council members that will reach out to me and say, we have X amount of bills that are coming. Here's where we stand, which is really helpful for me to know that as your representative. So for me, I can't predict the outcome of some of these bills. I know the intent is if we split them up into six different bills, right? Then they may get passed. For me, I've let the bill sponsors know that I am a no on 1313, which is the transit-oriented bill. And why, I've shared my concerns with them on that one. Some of the other ones you have on here, I'm trying to remember which ones they are.
Is 1152 is the ADU bill?
The ADU bill, I don't know if that's come through.
It has, it has not yet.
It has not yet. So, okay, it's holding in a prope, great. Everything's in a prope, yes. Unfortunately, yeah, it's about the money. But as your representative, I look through that lens when it comes to these. So if you are and our city are a no on that particular bill, I will be a no on it. There are some times that I am a yes on some things that maybe that our community, I think pesticides is one, right? That I struggle with, to be honest with you. I know it's local control, but I have concerns having each municipality having different sets of regulations compared to what the state does. So that I'm still battling within myself on that one. But the rest of them, I'm very supportive of what my community wants. I don't know if they'll get them out. They most likely will, but then they have to go to the next chamber and have that discussion there too. That's the checks and balances, right? We might get it out of the House, but it may struggle up in the Senate or vice versa. So does that answer your question? Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we share constituents, but we have a different role, right? So I think it's policy by policy too, where, I mean, I could see on the list that we just reviewed, I see eye to eye on a lot. I can say one thing, I've let the sponsors know on the construction defects, that I see that as a really dangerous policy. And so I do not, I will not be supporting that. But that's because there's forced arbitration, there's pieces in there that are, I understand what they're trying to get at and I just disagree with the means. So that's one thing where I can say, I mean, with the consumers on that one. But I think also what she's mentioned about how things shift and change, your position may change. You never know what's going to happen. So I think when things are in front of the full Senate, I don't serve on the local government committee, but I do serve on business and labor. So some of these things come to my committees and I serve on ag. So something like a pesticide, what have you? I mean, we have, what do we have, raw milk? We have all kinds of things, you know? But some things will be really important to you that come in front of ag, you know? We've seen measures on how we should be landscaping, for example, in terms of water conservation and what that might mean for something like a city of Wheat Ridge. So, but like I said, on the front end, I will depend on you to let me know where you're at. It's one thing if in the end we don't agree, because that's going to happen. But if I do make a decision without consulting you, that's different, right? So. consulting you, that's different, right? So on some of these things where there's opposing your opinions, you know, I have a broader district than just Wheat Ridge and a lot of constituents. So I am, I mean, you know, over 100,000 different bosses for me, right? I need to listen to what's happening to them all across the district and the county. But yeah, I mean, you are, you are the experts in a lot of these issues, and I will just, I will look to the chief of police for things that I need to on his issues and to the councilors for guidance on how some of these policies should turn out. If there's something that is really particularly important, again, like I said, on the front end of the conversation, that was made very clear to me when I was contacted by city manager and the mayor to say, "Hey, here's what's going on. We have grave concerns. If you're open to having a discussion." We got on the cell phone that day. So if there is something that's bubbling up, sometimes you might not even 100% align with the CML. So I think just keep giving information to my office. We have a direct line of communication with the lobbyists every day. And then, you know, where I can, I'd love to support your priorities. Where I can't, you're going to know why.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen?
Yeah, thank you. That sparked a couple of things for me. One, as I forget to mention, you know, we hear about all the divisiveness both at our nation's capital and at the state capital. But if you look at the scorecard provided by CML, there's actually several bills that are sponsored, bipartisan bills. So there, we do have to remember, there's cooperation across the aisle. And I notice it's usually around animal welfare, so I guess we all go home and love our pets. Senator Danielson, you mentioned a raw milk bill. Our esteemed colleague Amanda Weaver is not here tonight.
She's online.
She's, she's online. I would love to know what the status of that is. I believe it was like a direct, a consumer direct, I know we didn't bring it up forward, but if, that would be something Wheat Ridge would probably be supportive of. We have, we have farmers here, we have goat farmers, we've got, we are the farmers. So if that bill is going anywhere, just, I will speak on at least behalf of myself and Amanda Weaver that we support consumer direct raw milk. So.
Yeah, it, I came to ag committee, went to the floor, it passed without any real problems. It was just, it's just kind of, I shouldn't have used it in a flippant way, and I by no means dismiss it as such, because it is important to these producers. It's just a good example of the kinds of things I would never have thought that we would spend. We literally had, I mean, I don't know how much testimony we had from proponents and opponents about this bill that was basically designed to, I think, make it a little bit easier for producers and consumers of raw milk to connect without any health concerns. And again, out of my, you know, field of expertise. But even there, again, I did have constituents from the area call and say that was really important to them, which I wouldn't have anticipated. So that particular bill, I think, should sail through fine.
And then I just wanted to, one last comment. You know, on the construction defects, when we were doing our affordable housing study about a year ago, and we were discussing the different strategies that would actually, that we could take as a city to provide housing affordability for people who live here now and want to live here, one of, one of the key conversations we had was the missing opportunity to buy a condo is really preventing wealth accumulation for younger people trying to buy their first homes, that they really are forced into purchases that involve land purchase. And so anything we can do as a state to actually get past the things that are prohibiting condo investments, I mean, I wouldn't be able to live here in Wheat Ridge today if I hadn't bought a condo in my late twenties and was able to appreciate with that condo, because I could buy a condo for $90,000 and sold it for a little bit more, and then that little more was my down payment for a house. So we, when we were talking in our affordable housing strategy, really identified that the ability to build condos in Wheat Ridge is actually a strategy that would not only provide affordable and attainable houses, but actually would provide wealth accumulation through housing investment in a way that we can't do as the city. So as a policy across the board, it would be really great to see some of those barriers removed.
Thank you. Majority Leader?
So much. Back to the raw milk. It is Senate Bill 43, and it was actually brought by, it's Senator Roberts, it's actually bipartisan, Senator Pelton, and then also the Speaker of the House, Julie McCloskey. So, yeah. Yeah, so if you want to learn more about raw milk?
All right.
You can look up the bill.
We're, we're going to start drawing down our, this portion of our agenda tonight. Are there any, are there any final questions from staff or council members that you'd like to ask at this time while we have our guests here?
And I'll just add, if you think of something later, you all have my contact information. It's very public. And so I do have to go home, but anytime, we can get back on the phone and follow up, even if it's after tonight's meeting. Anytime.
Okay. Amanda Weaver, you had a couple of questions. Harrison, I'm sorry. Had half of it right.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, State Senator Danielson, for being here. We appreciate your time tonight. And House Majority Leader Duran, thank you for this opportunity to discuss this legislation. We appreciate it. I'd like to talk about House Bill 211110, which makes it a civil rights violation to not be in compliance with the World Wide Consortium Web Content Accessibility Guidelines. And I would just like to start by thanking you both very sincerely for sponsoring this piece of legislation. It's so important. And if you have to go, please do feel free. No problem. Thank you for sponsoring the bill, though. So one in five Coloradans identifies as having a disability. So I think that we believe in the importance of this legislation. As public servants, we've been striving to meet these standards, and we've made great progress. All of our websites are, now have alt text, they have compliant fonts and color contrasts, we've added closed captioning, we've made such great progress. What we need, I will wrap this up quickly for you both, what we really need is an extension on this bill. It's, goes into effect July of 2024. We have worked tirelessly with a team of 60 web admins, attending bi-weekly trainings for the last two years to get to where we are right now, and we still have a tremendous amount to go. I would like to respectfully request that you consider extending the deadline to allow us to have more time for compliance.
And we feel Wheat Ridge is probably way ahead of many communities. There's many communities smaller than us, they're never going to meet this deadline. So we would love to see some extension, if possible. We'll send you more information.
We'll send you something. Thank you so much. I know you've got to run. Thank you so much. And...
Thank you so much. And I've got some cards here, too, that have my contact information I can leave, or we can pass on.
Please, please leave those here.
However you want to do it. Thank you.
And I want to take just a moment of personal privilege to say what a pleasure it has been to work with, with both of you in the, in the State House. It was, it was amazing last year when we were able to talk at length and really exchange good ideas and text and be right, be able to, to be right there with you as you, as you think about these bills. I also want to say that the decorum in your, in your, in the chambers has been much, so much better this year. I think you've really done a lot of, a lot of work in respecting one another and in, and in talking about it, the tenor of the tone, the tenor of the stakeholder engagement is totally different than it was a year ago. And I hope that you, as, as Councilor Dozeman said, we, we really want to be a partner with the city and with the state to craft the best, the best world that we can for our citizens. We think we have some real advantages being on the, on the ground, you know, in the, in the grass and in the weeds, and can really do a great job locally. We want to have the state be a partner with the things that happen statewide, but, but really allow us to do what we do best, which is local governance. So, but I want to thank you very much.
Thank you. And I think the partnership goes both ways. I love that. And sometimes we can find that common ground, sometimes not, but at least we have the conversation, right? And we exchange ideas and thoughts.
Exactly.
And thank you for mentioning the decorum in the chamber. It's been a real challenge and a struggle, but, you know, I'm working really hard to make sure we include our colleagues on the other side, have great relationships with each and every one of them, and to make sure that we run as many bipartisan bills as we can, and we find that common ground. It's tough, and it's a tough time, and there's 65 in there that each have different opinions. But thank you for acknowledging that. That means a lot. That tells me that we're all doing something right.
You bet.
So I appreciate it. Thank you.
And Heather, I want, I want to thank you for coming tonight and the, and the work that CML does on behalf of us and the other cities in the state. So thanks so much. And, you know, sleep well tonight, because you have a lot of work still left to do. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks for coming. with us a few moments while we gather everyone back into, into chambers. We're not going to take a break at this time, if that's okay. Yeah, yes. We're going to, we're going to create the conditions so that it will not take a long time.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Well, let us move to our second agenda item. This is agenda item number two. This is the Lutheran Legacy Campus and the Carr Street Urban Renewal Plans. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. We got a brief one this evening. We did bring this forward to you several months ago with an update, and we received consensus to move forward from city council on this, creating two new urban renewal areas for the city, one for, very importantly, for the Lutheran Legacy Campus, Lutheran Legacy Campus, and then also one for call on the Carr Street Plan. It's for an area west of Wadsworth, south of I-70 to Garrison Streets. So we've had the, we've gone through the required studies and analysis, and Steve is here this evening to provide summary of that and talk about next steps. We do have consultant with EPS is online.
Correct.
If you have any questions for EPS, who did the studies for us. Steve?
Thank you very much, Mr. Goff, Mayor, and members of the council. We are coming tonight with almost the final step to come present to you before you will adopt a resolution to form two new urban renewal plans. At this point, we're probably going to ask that we adopt them at separate dates. We're looking at taking the Lutheran plan. We want to make sure that 25-year process that we're allowed to receive TIF is maximized for that development. So that one will probably happen later on in this year. The first one we'll come forward with is the Carr Street. I was also reminded tonight that probably Mayor Starker was the only, was a council member back when we approved our last urban renewal plan in 2015. So most council members have not been involved with forming a new urban renewal plan. So I just kind of want to quickly go through the steps that we're going to do to bring it forward to the council. And of course, oh, maybe I need to turn that on. There we go. Just see. It'll work? Okay. So the plan formation requirements that we're required to do, the first thing we're required to do besides hiring the cult consultant, picking out the plan area, once we have all of our documents done, is we're required to go to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission would then make a finding of compliance to the comprehensive plan for the city. And we went in February, on February the first, and went to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission looked at both plan areas. As I always tell my board members, if you've seen one urban renewal plan, you've seen every urban renewal plan in the state. They're all pretty much the same. They really take a 50,000-foot level view of what's going on in the plan area. So they looked at both plan areas and passed resolutions saying that they do conform to the city's comprehensive plan. After they do that, we will then move forward to the city council. This thing doesn't, there we go. That we will, that our next step will be at a regular meeting, that we will hold a public hearing on the new urban renewal plan or plans as we move forward in that. In order to form a new urban renewal plan area, there's quite a bit of work we've been doing for the last year. Janice Hoppy, Councilmember Hoppy, is on our board, and she's been part of helping us approve those plans. First off, we do, we sit down with the consultant staff, and we identify what the plan areas. We then are required to do a condition survey. And the condition survey talks about 12 blighting reasons in the state in order for us to form an urban renewal plan area. Of those 12 blighting conditions, we're required to find at least four of them in an urban renewal area in order to move forward with the plan. If we find those four blighting conditions, we then go forward with an impact report. An impact report talks about what sort of impact it will have on all the taxing entities within the area. And we'll talk about that moving forward. We then form an urban renewal draft plan. As of 2016, January 1st, 2016, by House Bill 1348, we're now required to enter into agreements with all those taxing entities that receive a mill levy. We're currently in negotiations with those. We have two agreements of the five in, in the plan areas that we need to do with, and we hope to have the other ones settled very shortly. And also because of that, we will add new board members. HB 1348 stated that to the board, you will add a representative from the County Board of Commissioners, you will add a school board member, and then all the remaining taxing entities between them will decide upon one other member to be part of your board. Now, by adding three members to our board, that'll bring us to an even number of members. So we anticipate that the mayor will appoint, appoint one other person to be on our board to bring us to an odd amount on the urban renewal board. So the Lutheran Legacy Urban Renewal Plan, this is the map of the plan. It contains 21 parcels and is a total of 146 acres. It does not include any of the current residential in that area there. It does also not include the church at the northwest corner of the property. You'll see, it looks like a little string that's hanging out to the right-hand side. And that's the Rocky Mountain ditch that runs through the property there. Upon development of that land, that ditch is probably going to need to be improved in some way. So if we're able to use tax increment financing to do that, we'll utilize that, that component. And there we go. I said, there are 12 blighting conditions that have, that are within the statute, and we have to meet at least four of those in order to form their renewal plan. Within the Legacy Campus, we found there's a lack of adequate street layouts. If we develop it into what the plan says that it wants to be housing, new streets, odd lot layouts in there right now. There's unsafe conditions in there, mainly along that Rocky Mountain ditch that isn't covered. There need to be site improvements, obviously, in there. There's no infrastructure under the ground there. And then there's just vacancies. Once that hospital leaves in September, you're going to have a vacant hospital land. So that is a blighting condition. Oops. Did I get there? The plan vision, the plan vision paints out two scenarios. One scenario is a lesser amount than the other one. Both of them contemplate housing in there. Different scenarios contemplate a different amount of housing in there. Ultimately, this plan doesn't define what housing should go in there. The number that will ultimately be through zoning, city council, planning commission, they'll decide that. But we want to create a vibrant, livable community in that area, and that's part of the vision of this plan. So the real reason we formed the plan is to eliminate blighting conditions. So that's what we want to do, is eliminate those blighting conditions. We want to provide incentives for private development. In our 30-plus years of having urban renewal in the city, in our staff memo that we provide, provided you, talks about some of the successes that we have had at urban renewal. And we have done a marvelous job, especially over the last 10 to 15 years, of really providing some real amenities for our community. And we want to certainly enhance the current property tax revenue and the assessed value that goes along with that. The main thing we want to do is we want to follow the wishes of the Lutheran Legacy Master Campus Plan that was done with Lutheran, as well as the community, the city council, to pass that plan. Again, the urban renewal plan doesn't say it has to be residential in there. An urban renewal authority can support. An urban renewal authority can support any development that occurs in there. So it doesn't really dictate it has to be that plan. These are the taxing entities that we talked about in there. So all these taxing entities, we will have to come up with agreements in order to move forward. Based on the amount of mill levies that they have are the amount of funds that they will be within our increment back to the city of Wheat Ridge. There are some assumptions that are made in the plan. These assumptions are built on what an average town home will go for, multifamily, single family. If there's some commercial in there, we expect a portion of that hospital to remain standing. Some of that could turn into commercial. And the office that's on the campus right now, right now, that, all that land is tax exempt. But moving forward, it will be taxable income that's going to allow us to work out of assessed value of roughly $3.6 million as we move forward. Within those plans, it lists how much money that we will be able to acquire as far as our tax increment that we'll generate annually through the plan at full build-out. I'm not going to go individually what each taxing entity will be providing to the urban renewal authority. It's all within the plan because all of those taxing entities, it's all different as we move forward with each one of those areas. But within each plan, within the impact report, it lists if we approve the plan in 2024, moving forward to 2048, how much impact that will be on all of those. Within the Carr Street Urban Renewal Plan area, it's 28 parcels, 109 acres, pretty much on the right-hand side of that picture that you see. That's really Johnson Park, Wadsworth Boulevard, down to the US Truck School and the light industrial area along there. Lot of open space that we've included in there because there is some, the Clear Creek Channel that runs through there. That's going to need some major improvements if we want to develop this property. And it really goes all the way out to 44th Avenue and up to this, on the left-hand side of the picture, that's Garrison Street. So for the most part, most of you know Pietrus Pizza, that shopping center there, that's where it terminates there. People have asked us, why does not include itself all the way down to the terminus at Ward Road? Because we did a 44th Avenue subarea plan. And at some point in the future, we might want to form an urban renewal plan area over that area specifically. So that's why we terminated it at Garrison Street. You see Garrison Street is part of the plan. It is only the street that is included in that. None of the residential properties are included in that 109, in those 28 parcels, 128 acres. Again, identical process to form the plan, the conditions, the impact report, the draft plan, the taxing entities, and the new board members will go in there. We needed to find four blighting conditions in there. Very easy to find those. We actually found seven of them in there. Street layout, poor lot layouts, unsafe and unsanitary, needs site improvements, need infrastructure. It's pretty dangerous if you're back there. Some truck movements out of there. And we have vacancy of property out there, some derelict properties out in that area there. The, the plan, it's, it's really just intended to stimulate economic development and job growth in that area there. We have a proposal on the table from a company that has purchased the US Truck School to build a brand-new and light industrial building out there. No tenant has been announced for that yet. But again, it needs significant work to the Clear Creek drainage area out there to make that reasonable and feasible. And we would use tax increment financing to help fund that and bring that moving forward. Again, the 44th Avenue Subarea Plan, while it really just hits a very small portion of this plan, there's certainly going to be some overflow. People in that area don't know that the plan ends directly at Garrison Street. So we want to conform to what the wishes are in the 44th area, Subarea Plan. These are the entities that have mill levies in the area. About the only one that changes in there in the Lutheran plan, it's the West Metro Fire District. Within this plan, it's the Arvada Fire District in there. And again, within the plan, the impact report to those taxing entities is spelled out within the plans that you have in your packet. As I said, this would be a pretty quick report, myself, Mr. Goff, and Sarah Dunmire from EPS is online now, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Goff, do you have anything? Or Sarah, do you have anything else? Please speak up.
Yeah, I'll just add to one piece Steve briefly mentioned. So we're recommending that we adopt the Carr Street Plan in the next month or so, but hold off on the Lutheran Legacy Campus Plan. Not to get in the weeds too much, but the URA law allows you to capture the increment for a 25-year period. If we start that now, before development starts, you're going to potentially lose two or three or four years. We don't anticipate any development probably happening on the Lutheran campus for two, three, or four years. Any developer or new owner that buys it is going to appreciate that, that we're waiting to trigger the clock at a later date. So we did still want to present it to you this evening and bring it back at a later date when we know development is going to happen. So Sarah, anything from you?
I would just agree with that. I definitely agree with the recommendation to kind of hold off on Lutheran until development is proposed to make the best use of that TIF clock. Also, I just highlight, as Steve mentioned, you know, both of these areas meet that criteria of existing conditions within the statutes, and I think both are very deserving of a URA accreditation.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll open it up for questions. Counselor Holt, Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, can you, can you remind me, I know I asked this in our meeting, but how long do we have on, on our assessment? Like, does it expire? Does our blight assessment expire while we have to do a new assessment on Lutheran later on down the road?
No. I don't believe so. Sarah, does, does an impact report or conditions, I don't believe the conditions report has a timeframe. I think if we waited two years, we'd probably want to come back and relook at the impact report.
Okay.
Yeah, to my knowledge, I believe, and we'll have Cory confirm this, but the condition survey, it can last, I think, up to like five or more years. You might just need to go back and say, yes, these conditions are still relevant and present within the study area. And then the impact report would likely need updated with the updated mill levies to set that impact for each of the taxing districts.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pocham Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, just real quick, I think we all understand this because we all are in this. Can you tell maybe the folks at home why we would do this? Why would we go into and have this plan? Why would we be looking at public funding? Why, why are we doing this?
Sure. Certainly, most development of any significance in this century has used a public partner, private partnership. This allows us to capture additional property tax increment, which normally flows, when a property owner pays his property tax in the county, that money can be used anywhere in the county. The advantage of using urban renewal is that money comes directly back to Wheat Ridge to be used in Wheat Ridge, not only to assist with that development, which otherwise would not be feasible without the use of public-private partnership, but it also improves areas along there, such as the Carr Street, the Clear Creek that runs through there, that floods. The people who live along there can't get homeowner's insurance and flood insurance in there. It's virtually impossible. If we were able to use tax increment financing to improve those conditions, it can now take these people potentially out of that 500-year, 100-year flood plain, and they would be able to lower their rates on taxes. So not only is an investment in the community directly with a development, but it also picks up, you know, the, the rising tide raises all boats.
Well, essentially, too, Mr. Stites, you know, most properties like this, a private developer on their own cannot make it a project pencil, most likely, just because of the needed infrastructure that's required. As Steve mentioned, Lutheran campus, you know, the campus has been there for over 100 years. There's a lot of infrastructure under the ground, street network, that just increases the cost so much in a developer's pro forma that we would never probably get private development on these properties without providing some sites subsidy.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Good explanation.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also just wanted to mention, too, that as a, as a board, we look at the feasibility of, how, like, how mu, they don't just come in and say, hey, write us a check for blank, right? We look at the feasibility of the project that they're presenting, what the end, what the end result is going to be, and then what are some things that we can potentially fund? And it's, you know, it's things that are in the, like, public right-of-way and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's no guarantee any future developer will get any money. They have to prove that they need it, the but-for analysis, that but-for public subsidy, this project won't happen.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. In order to move forward, is there, is there additional, additional research, additional work? I'm thinking of Carr Street. The report we have here is pretty, this is pretty much it.
It is in the draft form. It is substantially what it is. Unless you, as council members, look at it and say, we just don't like a section, could we relook at that? But for the most, it is what it is right now.
Everything that's required by URA law in the state statute has been completed. And the next step is for your approval.
And then I'm sure I share the concerns of my neighbors because I live within the boundaries of the urban renewal area. If, if the area is declared to be blighted, what effect does that have on residential home values?
None. We are remediating blighting conditions. We're not calling Councilmember Larson's house a blight, okay? So, and people, people always think that that's it. What we're doing is remediating blighting conditions. Within this plan area, I think in the Carr area, there were seven issues, blighting conditions, that we can remediate. So you may have none on your property, but it just happens to be within that plan area, your property.
Well, there are no, there are no residential properties within, within the proposed plan area.
I believe that the apartments right on the Clear Creek, Jefferson County, Jefferson Foothills Housing.
Yeah.
And I looked as close as I could. I couldn't see any other residential.
I should have said no single-family residential properties are in there.
Actually, it should increase the rest, in my opinion, it increases the adjacent residential property values because there's a plan in place to clean up the blight that surrounds it.
And then the flood plain work that you discussed, and while I was canvassing for the election, there were several people in that neighborhood that said not only could they, was flood insurance very difficult to get, but anybody that wanted to put, for example, an addition on their house would not be able to under those conditions. So my question is, you mentioned that some of this, some of the funding that, some of the money that would come back as these things expand would be used for, on the flood plain and mitigating whatever, whatever comes up. But we're also looking at funding sources from things like 2J for infrastructure in that area. Is it a, do things have to wait until we can move this, the urban renewal plan forward? Or is that going to hold up sort of the progress on this?
No, that's just one expense that would be eligible from the URA funds, flood, flood drainage issues. But yeah, it won't hold anything up if Maria looks at the city as she's doing now and through our stormwater master plan. If that becomes a priority, yeah, that would, that would be a project that, that we could fund through a stormwater fee or other uses, or the 2J money. Yep.
And we have had conversations with the flood district there. Because they already have pre-existing obligations for that flood plan, our agreement with them that we'll bring forward will most likely say that they get 100% of their increment. They cannot obligate money to TIF if they've already got obligations in that area, which we're fine with. As long as, as long as that floodway is repaired, we don't care who pays for it and how it gets paid for.
Thank you.
Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. So I, it took me a while to kind of puzzle through the Carr Street Plan. It's a really unique map. But I do want to just express my gratitude that it includes the Carr Street underpass. When we had first talked about it, we identified that that's a pretty dangerous, you know, especially with the outgoing truck-driving school that, you know, I ride, I ride my bike to Costco a lot underneath there, and it's just really treacherous. So I just want to thank you for the creative lines drawn on the map here.
And please understand it does not include I-70, though. Just the roads.
Right. Right.
Well, if you look at the map, it looks like the highways, but it does not include the C-dot.
The C-dot land is actually not part of our city.
Not right. Just want to make that clear.
Yeah, that is not, yeah, they'll take our money. So I'm just sort of curious, though, but like, the inclusion of Garrison Street there, just, I guess I'd love to hear just what is, looking at systemically, our oddly shaped, our keyhole map here. What, what is, like, what is the vision for the eligibility by including the Garrison and also confirming it's both sides of Garrison and not just down the middle of Garrison?
That was a request really of community development, in that at some point, if, if that whole area around the redevelops and new buildings are built, Garrison Street is probably going to need some reconstruction. Again, the use of urban renewal funds are so fantastic to do public improvements that we would be able to, by including in there, that if Garrison Street starts getting beat up, we can come along and resurface Garrison Street utilizing that.
Okay. Great. I just wanted to make mention, so several of us just got back from National League of Cities in Washington DC last week, and Patrick Goff and I were at National League of Cities Conference in, I think it was in November in Atlanta. And at both of those, you know, we really have an opportunity to talk to our colleagues across the country. And we just have so many amazing things happening in the city. And it's really sometimes in stark contrast to other communities across the country that are in decline and are dealing with significant budget deficits, declining population, increasing crime. And things like this are exactly why Wheat Ridge is doing well is because we're structurally looking at opportunities to both invest in ourselves and to attract quality investment into our city. So I just, really coming fresh off of NLC and having some pretty, like, humbling conversations with communities like in Ohio where they're actually looking at bankrupting their city, and they have lost their ability to, to even solve their problems, let alone, you know, cast a vision to how to really thrive. So I just am really always proud of the, the work we do as a city, both from, you know, staff, urban renewal, seated council in partnership with our community to continually reinvest in ourselves. It's really meaningful because the alternative, when we talk about blighted areas, it's, you know, we think of blight as one thing, but blight can be small things that add up. And we do good work in the city around this, and I just want to thank everyone involved in that.
And thank you very much for that. And as we are continually reminded, it is you, the City Council, who forms the urban renewal authority, who approves our plans. And it's my board of directors who look at the but-for proposition, but-for the use of urban renewal funds. This would not move forward and diligently expend those revenues that we have, that we see come in. I'm only the executive director. I'm only the staff member, and it's ultimately all of you who make us move forward. We go by your wishes, as our legal always tells us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if we delay the Lutheran Legacy Campus Plan, how long do you anticipate that delaying? And it wouldn't trigger a new plan, so then the implications for the legislation wouldn't be inactive. Is that correct?
That, that would, because if you approve the Carr Plan, that, that will trigger the House Bill 1348 requirements. Yep.
And so do we have a plan in place for appointing those new members?
Steve's been working, yeah, with.
So ultimately, it's not our plan. Legislation says it's their, what we will do when you approve the first plan, we'll just send out notification that says, okay, as of June 1st, you will have members of our board. It is their determination to select their members. It's not our determination, except for if we choose to have that one community member. So there are communities that have enacted 1348 that are supposed to have three members, but in some of them, they only have two, some only have one because the other entities just can't decide who to sit on their board. And it ultimately is not the urban renewal authority board to tell them who it should be.
Can you remind me of what the timeline is for them to appoint those representatives?
We will, so upon you adopting the resolution to form the plan, we will send notification that says you now have the right to be on our board of directors. But there's no time limit for them to, they, they have to have it within a year. Ultimately, like I said, there are some urban authorities that don't have all three members at it just because those, some of them, you have all the other remaining taxing entities, they just can't decide on one person.
So will that hinder our ability to move forward?
No. Not at all.
Okay, so we can just continue staying in step with.
Yeah, it would just, could be considered an absent member of that board.
And at the point in which we are designating the Lutheran Legacy Campus as an urban renewal area, would we be considering doing another master plan since it would be probably five years since we conducted that process, or is that set in stone?
The master plan that we did several months ago. The master plan that we did several months ago--
With the, no, with, in 2021, the concepts?
Yeah, for Lutheran Legacy Campus. Yeah, I mean, it's going to move forward quicker than five years. Lauren and I had a meeting today. The property's going to be out on the market probably the second week of April. So I think it'll be under contract by the end of summer, if not sooner. So everything at this point is moving forward based on that concept plan, master plan that was developed. Any rezoning that will occur will be based on that concept. You know, if it sits for 10 years, I think, yeah, I think we should really consider.
Okay.
Probably taking another look at it, but I don't--
Let's hope it doesn't.
Yeah, yeah. It shouldn't. At this point, I don't think it will.
And to kind of piggyback on that, this urban renewal plan, again, doesn't contemplate the use. So if it became--
As a blighted area, so that we can have a public-private partnership. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And just one little follow-up question here. The report, the draft does mention the possibility of doing some things to integrate transportation. Can you maybe describe what that might look like?
I think that's just an eligible project in any urban renewal area. So very simply, on the Lutheran campus, transportation would be a better street network. Right now, there's really only two access points to that hospital, one off 32nd, one 38th. So it's simple as that. You could have even more complicated. I think URA allows you to do mass transit-type projects, which we don't necessarily complicate for either one of these projects. So it's a general category that is allowed under urban law, transportation.
I would also piggyback on that also. You have Johnson Park with a real nice trail that runs through, then, then you hit that blighted property where you're staring at some pretty old properties. So transportation doesn't just mean vehicular cars. It could improve trails along there, walking.
Counselor Hoppe, did you have another question? Then I would like to ask if we have a consensus. I don't see any more questions. Do we have consensus to move this forward for a formal presentation at a future council session for, to adopt two separate plans? Show of hands, we have that. Thank you very much. That concludes agenda item number two. We will go back to the next item is staff reports. Manager Goff.
Yeah, I do have, apologize, a couple quick things, important things. Couple of them are very quick. Little Brazil, if you don't know, is open now at 38th and Uplum. So if you haven't tried it, check that out. I did find out today that our $200,000 congressionally directed spending request is still for the Clear Creek Makerspace. It is still in the budget, the federal budget, and they are hopefully finalizing that budget this week and that they'll vote on that. So fingers crossed that we may also get our 200,000. As you all know, we did get our 2 million for affordable housing project. We are working on a branch drop-off because of this most recent storm. There are definitely a few branches out there. Let's see, I want to thank the school district. They are helping us out. And this year, it's going to be at the Coller Strand Elementary School on West 38th Avenue. We typically do it at Anderson Park, but this weekend is the Easter egg hunt. Next weekend's Easter. That park gets used a lot for both of those events, and we didn't want that conflict between residents and people dropping off limbs. So March 22nd and March 23rd, from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Coller Strand Elementary will be a branch drop-off in the school. Thank, again, thank the school district for allowing us to do that. There's more information on the website about that. One last item, the cultural commission, or the historical society is asking for permission from city council to put a mural on the post office building in the historic park. It doesn't have to go through the typical art selection process, because this is considered additional signage. I want to find my email here to make sure I'm getting this all right. Just want to make sure there's no issues from this council for them moving forward. They will have a professional artist coordinating the project with Weaver's High School kids. The gentleman's name is Mark Otis. He's a former Wheat Ridge resident who currently serves as creative director, design director at YESCO Las Vegas, the largest sign company in western US. He's had, he's done work at the Tivoli Downtown on the Smokestack on our area campus, and also the Water Tower at North Federal Boulevard. But he specializes in historic murals on buildings, and I've seen some examples I could show you, but they look really nice. But we just want to make sure, you own the building. We just want to make sure nobody has any major heartburn with that, but they're going to move forward. And they're not asking for any money. They're looking for a grant, and they're looking to move forward, starting now through April, production of the sign project in mid-May, and again, working with Weaver's High School students. So any major heartburn with that, if not, I can tell them to proceed.
You know, I understand that YESCO has done a lot of big electric signs and displays in Las Vegas. Do you think we'd be getting something like that?
Will not be electric. It's, yeah. It will be a painted mural. Tire project will move forward under the oversight of Mark, as I mentioned. Yeah, so it'll be a traditional historic-type mural.
Moving my tongue out of my cheek. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
That's all you've got. Okay, elected officials' reports. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. Happiness Gardens report, spring is coming. And we continue to partner with the Wheat Ridge High School students who are tending to some garlic that they planted this fall that is coming up, and it's very exciting to see their work showing up there. And I just want to, I just want to thank the city for supporting city council members and Amanda Harrison and Patrick and I to go to NLC. It's just, I always get a lot out of it. You know, I enjoy traveling with my colleagues, but as I mentioned earlier, you know, getting to talk with my peers across the country is just really insightful and just learning, you know, a lot of good things they're doing. It's always exciting to share the things that we're doing here. I think we export a lot of good, good stuff out of this city. But it's really valuable for us to have the opportunity to sit down and meet with our congressional representatives, both to thank them for their work on our behalf. It's really great to thank Representative Pedersen for her championing the funding that we receive for affordable housing. But that relationship building in DC is incredibly valuable and has really paid off, you know, over the years I've been doing it. So just, I appreciate that we value that as a city. I serve on the NLC's Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, and we had our big meeting while we were there. And I think I mentioned earlier, but we're prioritizing railroad safety. There is a train derailment every day in this country, sometimes up to three a day. And we have tracks in our community, and it's something that we care about. So we are supporting, we're asking our congressional leaders to support requiring, having one additional engineer on, on trains to help with engineering safety. So one of the things we're working on. But the other thing is, we've started a three-year, or two-and-a-half-year conversation about the next federal transportation reauthorization bill. And those are a lot of funds that have come into our community that have benefited us. And one of our advocacy pieces that we're doing as representatives of cities is really trying to develop a policy ask that Congress makes those funds as flexible, so that they come directly to local communities, and we get to spend more of those dollars to our own benefit, and fewer of them have to go through the state in additional bureaucracy. So I plan to serve on that committee as long as I'm serving on this council, and will definitely champion our right to be able to use more of those flexible dollars to serve our community needs without having to go through many layers of bureaucracy. So that's my Happiness Gardens and my federal report. Thank you.
Thank you, and glad you all had a, had a safe trip and got back on time. Almost.
Almost.
Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll echo everything that Counselor Hulteen just said. It's a great experience to be able to go out there and meet the leadership from not only our state, but the entire country. And a lot of them come up and go, hey, you guys from Wheat Ridge. And they have a lot of things that they've heard about us, and a lot of them very good. So, and that's, that's across the country. But it's great to be able to meet the mayors from, you know, Arvada, Edgewater, Golden, work with their council people. And, you know, we have to work together as a region, so that's really important. So get a lot out of that every year. So I appreciate the city and everybody for that. I want to mention we have our District 3 meeting coming up at the REC Center on March 30th. It's 9:00 AM. We'll have representatives from Lutheran there to talk a little bit about more the next, next steps that Lutheran is, is going through over the next couple of months as they get ready to move. So that's going to be huge for District 3, so hopefully we can get as many people there. Again, REC Center, 9:00 AM on March 30th. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got Counselor Snell, and then Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. Just a couple of, three quick thank yous. We had, as we all know, some pretty heavy snow, and I just want to recognize our Public Works Department in how they were, I feel like they were just ahead of that as much as they could be with plowing. And I've read comments on the old Facebook and just heard people talking about how they were so appreciative of the, of the plowing and how quickly it was done, and, you know, just with the efficiency. And people love the snow plow tracker. So kudos to Public Works for that. I also want to give a shout out to the best party throwers in District 1, that's Clancy's. This past weekend brought a lot of people to our wonderful city. And also, kudos to the police department for their extra coverage there of helping those people get across the street safely and whatever they were doing. Just their, their presence there was, was great. But kudos to Jeff and the team, because they, they do a great job every year, and I know it's a big undertaking. And then lastly, but certainly not least, I've gotten some communication from some constituents with traffic concerns. And I just want to recognize that we are all dealing with different concerns with traffic. You know, it's, it's kind of a common theme. But the way that I have communicated and they have communicated with me is super solution-oriented and very respectful of everyone else. And I think that those qualities are very difficult to have when you're frustrated in a situation. And so I just want to say, you know, great job, and let's keep it up, and we'll do our best to figure out things. So that's that. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to give kudos to our Public Works Department. I can always tell when I cross into another municipality, because we have a Public Works Department that is second to none. They always do an amazing job at plowing, and we were able to even take a walk along the Green Belt over the weekend, because it was really nice. And the trails were clear as well.
That's our Parks people, so thank them too.
So thank you for the Parks Department for staying on top of that. It was, of course, a little muddy getting from our cul-de-sac too, but that's just kind of, you know, a part of the fun, especially with the dogs. Also, I wanted to mention that Councilmember Larson and myself are having a District 4 meeting on Tuesday, April 2nd, at the Anderson Building at 6:00 PM. We will be having a crime and traffic update from the police department, and then we will also have a representative from Lutheran to just give updates and answer any questions of the community about the project moving forward. And I think that's all on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, ma'am.
Counselor Weaver, did you have, have something for elected officials matters?
I do. I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thanks for, thanks for letting me join virtually tonight. I'm a little under the weather. First of all, I just wanted to thank our elected officials for coming tonight. That was very helpful. And, and for Counselor Hulteen for, you know, raising the roof for, for raw milk. I really appreciate that. But that being said, what I, what I was hoping for was to ask for some support from my colleagues. I've been meeting with a couple local area, area, excuse me, area agricultural groups, like Rocky Mountain Farmers Union, around bringing more awareness to fire and animals and evacuation for our community. And I'm, I'm not quite sure what this means yet as far as policy in Wheat Ridge, but I, I'd like, I'd like to move forward and ask for support from my colleagues about, just thinking about whether that's information we put on a website or policies, best, best practices that we put out there. I know it's hard to think about when we've had so much water in the last four days, that we will head into fire season, but I just would, I'm asking for support to move forward with some ideas around how we can put more information out there to our community for evacuating animals, because we have a lot of big animal owners that would need that information and how that gets coordinated in emergency services.
Do we have support to, to move that forward, to discussion on keeping the animals safe? Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you.
We, we hope you are going to feel better very soon and be back with us next week, when we will have a full council meeting here in council chambers. I'd like to thank all the, all the residents who came by Vanola's Italian Market last Saturday morning. We had a really robust discussion, had, had my largest crowd ever, I think, to join me for coffee with the mayor. So I'll be back there again on the second Saturday in the next month, which I think is April. So if you have an opportunity to join me, please do. I want to make sure that we announce that this Saturday at Anderson Park, we've got our Easter egg hunt. I've got 9:30 start on my calendar. If you haven't been there with your kids, or, or just to come and watch the kids that are there, it's one of the best events in the year, is to watch the, watch the youngsters find Easter eggs. It's really, it gets you in the spirit for spring. And I want to thank our Senator Jesse Daniels and Representative and Majority Leader Monica Duran, who's our representative, for coming to join us tonight, and of course Heather Stauffer with CML for the great work that they do on our behalf. I think it's really important that we engage as a, as a council and as a city in the effect in the state legislature, potential, potential legislation that happens at the State Department, and I appreciate all of you being part of that discussion. So, thank you so much. Counselor Hulteen?
I'll make this--
You have one sentence, because we're overtime.
I know, I'm sorry. I forgot, I forgot. This is so exciting, though. On Saturday, this upcoming Saturday, from 11:00 to 1:00, there is a seed swap at a wonderful District 2 business, Permeterra, which is at 6494 West 44th Avenue. It's just a wonderful woman who has brought a vision in, and there's a seed swap. So go swap some seeds and get them in the ground. That's it.
Okay. Okay. And with that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.